Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the March twenty-third meeting of the curriculum committee meeting. I call the meeting to order. I will look for a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
And need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. Item three, approval of meeting minutes from our last meeting in February, or additions, deletions, adjustments necessary, and if not, I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 We will move on to skip item B, since there's nothing there, and move to item C, Exceptional Children's Program Update. Dr. Beecham, or Dr. Breedlove, an introduction to Dr. Beecham?
Yes, sir. Hey, good morning, everybody, on this wet Wednesday morning. We have one item to discuss with you all this morning, and working with Mr. Sides, we thought it would be a good idea to have our EC department give a general overview of our exceptional children's program. I don't know when the last time that we've done this. And so we thought this would be a good morning to be able to kind of go through some of the the aspects of the program and just kind of clarify. There's a lot of acronyms that we use from time to time and a lot of edgy speak, as Dr. Houlihan calls it. And so we want to try and and just shed some light on our EC department this morning and talk about a lot of things that they oversee and do for our district. And with us this morning, there are three members from our exceptional children's department who are with us. We have Dr. Laura Beecham, who's our EC director. We have Ms. Linda Little, who's our OCS transition specialist, and then we also have Ms. Amber Dry, who oversees our TTA and community-based vocational, she's a vocational specialist there. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beecham for her presentation. And the presentation itself has been PDFed and put in board docs. But Dr. Beecham, if you would go ahead and you can share your screen in your presentation at this time, and I'll turn it over to you. I know it could take a few seconds for it to come through.
Okay, thank you this morning. I appreciate the invitation, and it's a pleasure to meet with everyone. I'm going to get the presentation up and going. Okay. Is everybody able to view the presentation on the screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. So thank you for the opportunity this morning to come on and talk just a little bit about our exceptional children's department. This is just going to give you a brief overview of some of the programs and what they mean and how they function within our district. So I'm going to start off by talking about our special needs advisory council. Just wanted to put this notice out there. This is a parent-led council that is used to support parents of students with special needs. We work collaboratively as an EC department with parents. We'll have a virtual meeting scheduled for April. I believe the date is actually April fifth. Currently, because of students phasing out of either graduating or moving, we have a chairperson and co-chairperson positions that are vacant. So we will be seeking membership for someone to fill those two positions. I've also listed the UCS representatives that are on that committee. We have myself, the EC director. We have our assistant EC director, which is Sarah Staley. We also have our Section 504 Coordinator, which is Dr. Wendy Graffley. We have elementary and secondary administration. They form, they participate for a two-year term, and then we rotate them off with another administrator. We have our EC preschool coordinator, Diana Selzer. We have a EC program specialist, Hillary Proval, serves as our secretary for the committee. And we also have two EC social workers that serve on this committee. So I do believe we have some vacancies, and we will be seeking out new applications to fill those vacancies once after, once we meet on April fifth.
Dr. Beecham, can I ask you, would you prefer questions held to the end or as we go?
Yes, sir. If we can get through the presentation, if you'll just make note of the questions you may have, and then we'll be happy to continue anything at the end.
Sure.
All right, moving on, I just wanted to talk a little bit about IEPs and what the difference is between an IEP and a 504. So an IEP is a program that's developed individually based on a child's disability to allow for access in elementary and secondary education. It, the IEP outlines specialized instruction and related services that the student will receive. A Section 504 plan, the student is identified under the law as having a disability, but does not require that specially-designed instruction, but does require some accommodations to provide access to the curriculum. So those are just a quick glance at those two documents. This is a graphic that I like to use just to kind of give you a visual of what the growing intensity looks like as you travel through the different layers of educational opportunities. So in the blue, you have all students within the district. That's the majority of your population. With the orange, you have students with impairments that access the education on their own and do not require any additional supports. The yellow indicates you have students with some type of impairment that sustain, that substantially impacts their ability to access the educational environment, so they may require some accommodations for that. And then the red indicates the students that have a disability under the law that require that specialized instruction and that have an IEP. So what is an individualized education program? So that is a comprehensive plan that is developed to allow a student to access his educational needs. It's developed and reviewed and revised with parents and school staff in what's called an IEP meeting. We have requirements that are placed in that IEP, such as a child's current educational performance. It will include some updated assessment information, how they're performing in the areas of need. It'll include some measurable goals that are based off of those assessments. It'll also talk about the nature of special services, which we also call related services. And those are your occupational therapy, speech therapy, and physical therapy. So it lays out how that student will receive those services. Another term you'll frequently hear is least restrictive environment. We, those of us that live in EC all day long, we call it the LRE. So that is a provision that requires students with disabilities to receive their education in the regular classroom environment to the maximum extent appropriate. We must offer by law a continuum of services and placement options for students with disabilities. It begins in the regular classroom, and then it can get more restrictive on the continuum of services as students require it. Each child's LRE or least restrictive environment, it looks different. So what is least restrictive for one child may not be least restrictive for another, and that is individualized based on their IEP. The continuum is actually calculated by the amount of time a student is spent away from their non-disabled peers. So this gives us a quick programming snapshot overview. Like Dr. Breedlove said in the beginning, we use a lot of acronyms in EC that can be very confusing. We always look to see how we can streamline our communication so that it's more parent-friendly. So we're always taking a look at how we can improve. So the information that you're looking at is based on programming for the 21-22 school year. Of course, it, the programming is driven by the individual student's IEP. So these, what you're looking at here are specialized classes. Those are, some people refer to those as separate setting classes. You'll talk, we have our ACC's classes that serves a K-8 population. That is on the adapted curriculum. We have the ACC medically fragile class, and that is also on the adapted curriculum. We have our behavior-focused class, or the BFC class, that serves students that have behavioral needs within our district. That is a K-12 program. Also, because of the OCS component, we do break that out and provide a BFC OCS component for grades nine through twelve. And that allows students with behavioral needs to access that OCS curriculum. We have the CBSS Common Core, which is our Communication, Behavior, and Social Skills Classroom. That is K-8. And we also have that classroom that follows the Extended Content Standards. And those are for students that typically are on the spectrum disorder. But what we are finding is that the the strategies and the curriculum that is taught in that classroom is a benefit to many students and not just those with autism spectrum disorders. Our DHH is our Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program. Those, the students that participate in this program typically use sign language or other forms of communication. Some may have cochlear implants or other types of aids that assist them in hearing. We have our Learning Connections. That is your LC. It's for grades six through twelve. Those are for, that program is for students that have impairments in communication and behavior. Lots of times, they're on the spectrum. This, the autism spectrum disorder, and they, their academics are very similar to those that they're typically developing peers. They just require some of those social supports throughout their day. Our last specialized class that we have is our TTA program. That is our Transition to Adulthood program, and that serves grades nine through twelve. So that is strictly for high school. So typically, our students that are in our ACC move into the TTA, because that is an adapted curriculum. It follows the North Carolina Extended Content Standards. So those students, you'll have a multi-disability class that that all, that all have some type of cognitive impairments. So this kind of takes a closer look at high school. We frequently get a lot of questions about what is OCS and what is TTA and what is the difference? So this is a chart that I have put together. I have also linked in. So I'm going to look at OCS. This will link us to the high school graduation requirements for OCS. Is my internet will work appropriately? Here we go. So this is the DPI site. This shows you the Occupational Course of Study requirements for a student that entered ninth grade in the 21-22 school year. Some of the requirements had changed. So they do look at as when the student entered the program. So we do follow the state standards on that. So just going down that first chart for the OCS, they do receive a high school diploma, just as your future-ready poor students receive a high school diploma. They follow those Common Core state standards. It is at different pacing. There are twenty-two credits plus local requirements that the student has to complete. There's also some electives on employment preparation. There's a required vocational training, and I've listed the hours out there and what those hours need to be based on. They do require the CPR. They do take the end-of-course test, so they take the same test that our non-OCS graduates take. And then CTE, there's four credits there. There is a modified blueprint, Special Populations Handbook, that is very helpful to parents with students that might be entering in CTE, and they have a IEP. This is a good resource for parents to take a look at. It is quite lengthy, but it does provide a table of contents that gives you a quick view of resources. So I won't go through the whole handbook, but it's here for as a resource to families. So I'm going to look at the right-hand side of that chart and talk about our TTA. So our TTA stands for Transition to Adulthood. And I have linked the Extended Content Standards. So the TTA follows the North Carolina Extended Content Standards. And there is a content guide that is listed on here. Also, you have it broken down by subject matter. And then it goes down by grade. So that is the curriculum or the pacing that we follow for the standards. All right, going back to the chart, the total requirements for the Extended Content Standards, they do get a North Carolina graduation certificate. So it is not a high school diploma, but it is a certificate. They follow those Extended Content Standards. There's twenty-one total credit hours required, plus the local. And then they have vocational preparation requirements. They have help, safety, and independent living. And then we also have community-based vocational training during the last two years of their high school that they attend three days a week. CPR is only required for our Project Search students. You'll notice on your PowerPoint, there's just an asterisk beside yours, but I did add in that it's just for your Project Search students. That is a grad, that is a requirement from the hospital. And the hospital actually provides that training and certification for our students. They do take the North Carolina Extend One test instead of the EOC test. And they are required to have six electives, which may include some CTE classes as appropriate.
Dr. Beecham, would you elaborate on how it is determined if a student is eligible either for OCS or would be best served in the TTA program?
So, and I have Linda Little on the call, so I'm going to have her step in. We have she manages a lot of our applications for our OCS students. You know, the biggest the biggest piece is determining whether the student has the cognitive ability to be able to take those EOCs, pass those classes, and be able to earn the high school diploma. There's a lot of data points that we look at. We look at their academic history. We look at the psychoeducational that have been completed. We take a look at any outside evaluations or assessments, medical, that may be provided by the parents in determining, we don't take it lightly to pull a child off of a diploma and provide the certificate. But like I said earlier, the LRE is different for every child. So Linda, do you want to talk a little bit and expand a little bit on that?
Sure. The state actually has a OCS considerations form that is completed by the educators that are referring that student to provide OCS as an option. Once that is done, our EC program specialists approve that. And then it is presented to the parent and the student as an option of a curriculum for that student to complete high school. It is a parent and student decision. We try to provide them with everything so that they do make an educated decision. Now, with OCS, those students, once they complete at ninth through the twelfth grade, they would not have everything on their transcript that would be required for them to go to a four-year university or a degreed program at the community college level. However, I always let parents know that it doesn't mean that they cannot attend a four-year university, because there are several universities that do have programs that are designed specifically for our OCS students, and some of them even for our TTA students. OCS students can also attend a community college as well, because they have like different certificate programs as well.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is we support the parents and the entire IEP team, I assume, that they feel, okay, my son is kind of on the fence, but you know what? I want to push things, and I want to try the OCS program because I want it. And I think he or she is capable of a diploma program. And I'm going to give you a disclaimer. I'm coming from a personal experience where at times you have to push as a parent, the IEP team and the system for the benefit of your child. And so I want to encourage that there's an opportunity. If, the benefit of the doubt, I want a student to at least have a try at OCS. Now, if it's clear that this is beyond their capability, I understand. But I'm sure you're faced with a lot of situations where the parents feel the OCS curriculum is appropriate, and the rest of the team may not be so sure, let's say. How is, do you feel there's adequate opportunity for, you know, let's give this a try for a grading period or a semester? Is that possible to see if that student can adapt? Or is that too disruptive to be able to offer that trial period, if you will?
And I would say that we do look at those individually. We do have a couple of students that, I know I've worked with the schools this semester that are trying OCS, and we've just now got to the point where we need to make a decision. Do we continue in OCS, or do we need to move to TTA? If there is an opportunity for that child to gain a diploma, then absolutely, we need to start with that first. Because it is much harder to start with TTA and then try to backtrack in gaining those credits. So we do look at, you know, the diploma as our first priority. Now, if a student has been on Extended Content Standards since third grade and is progressing up to the high school, it would be extremely difficult because of the way the state outlines the content standards for them to be successful in a graduate diploma curriculum.
Right. That's too much of a transition.
Absolutely. But we do look at it individually, and absolutely, we do give, if there is if there is just a little bit of doubt in whether they need that TTA, we always try to push for the OCS, just to give them the benefit of the doubt and just let them try it. Sometimes kids surprise us.
And it's not just
give them credit for.
And it's not just the commitment of the student, it's the commitment of the parents as well, because it's most likely, and again, this is from firsthand knowledge, it's going to take additional commitment to make sure that student is following up with his academic requirements if they're trying the OCS program.
Yes, it is a collaborative partnership, that's for sure.
Yes, and we have also done hybrid programs for some of our students, because sometimes a student just does not fit in either one exactly. So we have had students that were definitely went into our TTA program. However, there were some things in OCS that they could benefit from, and vice versa. Versa, so yes, we cater it to the student.
Will those hybrid students be eligible for a diploma?
No, it is determined, you know, initially, that the student is either TTA or OCS. If they are in Extended Content, which is that TTA, then they would get a graduation certificate. And all of that is made clear with the parents and the student at that time.
And I'm going to call that program TTA Plus. How's that?
That would work. It is, it does give them a few opportunities to be with other students.
Mainstream.
Mainstream, yes, so that it's not your typical TTA pathway.
I like that. You're not locked into one or the other. For the kids that are on the fence, there's, there's an opportunity for additional academic challenge. I like that.
Well, the academic challenge is there. However, those students, if they're TTA, they're locked into that graduation certificate as the exit document. So I just want to make that clear.
Right. You have to go all the way fully into the OCS program for a diploma.
Yes.
No halfway. Got you.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Breedlove, I love their acronym definition sheet. I would challenge somebody at UCS to start an entire glossary of educational acronyms. I don't know how many years that would take, but I'll tell you what, for a layperson like myself, it would be most beneficial.
So in the parent handbook of rights that the state provides, there, in the back, there is a state acronym page. Now, each school district kind of has some of their own. So, you know, that is certainly something that we could look at, but the the state does provide those overall list of acronyms, because it is a lot. All right, I'm going to move on to the post-secondary preparation programs. This just lists a few. We have the Atrium Health Union Project Search, which we are very proud of. We're proud of all of these partnerships, but those are for your Transition to Adulthood Program students. It's located within the hospital. The students apply an interview for this opportunity, and the minimum age is eighteen. And if I remember correctly, Linda, this is the last year of their schooling, so they're considered a senior at this point. Isn't that correct?
Yes, it has to be their last year that they're actually participating in Project Search, which means that when they finish Project Search, they're going to work.
So this is, you know, this is a project we're we're very proud of. So we hope to continue to grow this through the years. And then we offer the STEAM, which is striving towards employment and maintaining. So this is a local collaborative with our Vote Recap facility. And it meets one time per month for your eleventh and twelfth graders in the OCS curriculum. So it includes your local agencies of facilities, service providers, and employers are invited to provide information and services, and they look at employment opportunities. This is also, we offer driver's education courses to our OCS students through STEAM. So we also have the Cafe Nut that is operated within the community by OCS and TTA students. This last school year and this school year, it has been closed due to the COVID-19, but that is looking to reopen next school year. And I believe they were doing some renovations on the building this year, which really kind of put us halting on looking at it before next school year, but that will be reopened.
Has the, the cafe in Porter Ridge High School also been closed this year?
So I have Amber Dry on the call, and she is prepared to talk a little bit about some of the opportunities that we have as school-based enterprise. So Amber, I'm gonna, we have quite a few that we can share with you this morning.
Good morning. To answer your initial question, the Porter Ridge Cafe has been opened this year. Those teachers have worked extremely hard within the confines of their school to get it up and running for their students. We've made some additional purchases for their program, just to continue to progress it along. And it is definitely a model program for what we would love to see in more buildings as well. So they've really done a great job, and it continues to grow, which provides more vocational training for our students. So, yes, the Porter Ridge program that I know many of you were at in its opening debut a couple of years ago, it is currently up and running. They got it up and running probably about halfway through this school year. So once they got their orders in and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it's underway.
So I can go tomorrow morning and get me a cup of coffee?
Yes, sir. Yep, you can go get you a hot cup of coffee. They're in the process of learning how to do as the spring approaches, learning how to do the cold coffee, frappuccino-type things. So, yeah, so they're, they're expanding and doing great things over there. So absolutely, go over there and get you a cup.
Now, wasn't there one other, I want to say Cutperson. Did they open one too? Was there one other high school that did?
So Cutperson does not currently have a coffee shop. They have a different type of school-based enterprise that is a candle company. So they make and make candles, but maybe what you're thinking about is Forest Hills. They do have a coffee business, and it is via a coffee cart that they have up and running on a daily basis throughout their school for, for staff.
And do they have, so they have a physical location in the school, like a retail store? Because I know those students were coming to the Coffee Nut when it was open.
Right. So the year that we opened the Coffee Nut, which was also the year that COVID-19 hit, it was students from Forest Hills and Monroe that year that we utilized. And from there, the teacher fell in love with the program. She was inspired by the Coffee Nut and what was going on, and wanted more going on for her students back on campus. And so, as many of you know, a lot of that funding was matched from the Board of Education as well as the EC department. And so we were able to provide each school with some funding to start And so we were able to provide each school with some funding to start their own school-based enterprise as they had interest or, you know, saw a need. And so Forest Hills used that money to do a coffee cart. And so they don't have a physical retail location. They work outside of their classroom and then they have stainless steel cart, curing machine, much the same in a very smaller condensed mobile version. They take orders through Google Documents throughout their school. And then the students work to fulfill the orders and go deliver the orders.
Okay. Well, I have some other questions, but I'll wait till the end of the presentation.
Sure. So the last slide that I have just talks about a little bit of our community engagement and vocational training and life skills opportunities. So students that are in our TTA program, we call it CBBT, which is Community-Based Vocational Training. So some of the locations we have available for students to complete their work hours is the Harris Dining Hall at Wingate University, Food Lion, there are four locations. Poppy Seed Bagel has two locations for us, Anytime Fitness. We had more prior to the COVID-19 closure, so we're looking to reopen that partnership. But just to list a few of them was Chick-fil-A, Monroe Aquatic Center, the Quincy Steakhouse and Walgreens. So we'll be trying to reestablish those partnerships once they fully open. I don't know that the Chick-fil-A in Monroe has opened up their dining room yet. So we're trying to wait on some of those businesses to completely open their doors again. For our OCS students, we have community-based training, which we refer to as CBT. And those include the Monroe Aquatic Center, the Good Shepherd's Ministries thrift store, the Animal Shelter in Union County, Stevens Mill Cafe, Anointed Cuts, Lake Monroe, Harris Teeter, there are six locations that we use, the Wagon Wheel Restaurant in Marshville, Fresh Chef, Food Line locations and Enterprise Fitness.
I'd like to recommend that you might want to talk to the Hartford Monroe Volunteer Organization. I'm sure they could use help organizing their donations, their distribution, et cetera. Are you familiar with Hartford Monroe?
I can add in that our Wolf School has partnered with Hartford Monroe in years past. And so it is, while not listed on our slides, it is a partnership that is, has been in the past. And so if not currently, we would definitely love to get that back up.
Okay, so that is the end of the presentation that I've prepared. So we will open it up for questions based on the information that I provided this morning. And I'm also going to have Linda Little and Amber answer some of the questions because they are involved in OCS and TTA on a daily basis.
Well, I have lots of questions, but as chair, I'm going to go last. So the members of the committee that would like to ask questions of, of the ladies.
Okay. And so much for coming and doing this presentation. It's been fantastic. As far as the advisory committee, how many total members are on that committee?
So according to the bylaw, according to the bylaws, we have up to nine parents. So the goal was to have one representative from each cluster. And we have the members of our EC department.
Okay, and then how do parents who want to be on the committee get the info so they know how to join or apply?
So we have, last year we revised the application and the brochure and provided those out to the school and asked them to send them home with families. And they would return them back to the school, which, or they can return them to me. We, at our April 5th meeting, will be taking inventory of our membership status to see where our vacancies are. And we will be sharing that out with the school and asking them to send home some applications or try to recruit families.
And the chair and the chairperson, are those parent positions?
Yes, those are parent positions.
Okay, as far as the specialized programs go, is there a list you can send us showing which programs are at which?
Yes, I do, yes, I can send you that list based on the twenty-one, twenty-two program. Each year we do look to see what our growth looks like, what our capacity looks like within each building. So it does shift a little bit. Our goal is always to get schools or students as close to their homeschool as possible. So we take all that into consideration. So I don't have the twenty-two, twenty-three information for you yet, but I can send you what I have for this school year.
Okay, and that was my other question is like, how do you decide which schools are going to have those programs? I mean, you look at capacity also?
We do, we do. I work with the Facilities Department to look at school capacity. I look at each school to determine how many specialized programs they have within their building. Typically, school, you know, within our specialized programs, it's added IEP meetings. And so I have to take a look to how much I put on to a school. So I'm just trying to balance it. But then we also, we look at each child individually. We'll calculate mileage from school to the proposed school. We reach out to transportation to see what our transportation, because it's not, our other goal is to make the transportation route as efficient as possible. We don't want the students on the bus any longer than we have to have them on there.
So it's fairly set up like within a cluster? Like if, if you are at a, if your neighborhood school isn't one that has the program, but you need the program, that you don't try to necessarily keep them within that same cluster then?
We try.
Yeah.
Right, as our population turns over and kids move in, it's constantly changing. So we always look to see where are our biggest population hubs coming from and try to plan programming. But I'm very careful to shift schools of existing students because, you know, you just try to keep as much stability for the kids as possible.
Exactly. Well, and if you could give us the list for when you figure it out for twenty-two, twenty-three, that would be great. What do you ask about the Special Olympics? I think, do we not have that planned for this year?
So we will not have Spring Games this year. So I've met, we've been meeting with the state coordinators for Special Olympics. We do have a school-based team that is ready, that's comprised of physical education teachers and then some EC representatives so that we can begin starting the planning for our Spring Games. The state put a halt on us actually having Spring Games. Union County is a county is lacking a coordinator for the Special Olympics. So until that position is filled, we're, we're doing the planning that we can on the, the school end and updating medicals and getting the necessary information so that when that is filled, we can move forward with Spring Games for next year.
So we're not having the games this year because the position is vacant?
So they win. So we will not have Spring Games this year. The, in meeting with the Special Olympics team from the state, Special Olympics Spring Games is coordinated and planned through the county. And then LEAs and districts participate as the guests and a lot of times host them on the ground. I did check around with other districts. Some are doing Spring Games, some are not, depending on the preparation within the county level. So we're going to move forward with planning for next school year for Spring Games. And then I encourage schools to look at opportunities within their school to actually, there's some type of, if it's a modified field day or some type of opportunity at the school level.
Is it the county Parks and Rec Department that would coordinate Special Olympics?
Typically, that's where that position has come out of. It is a volunteer position.
You know, had that opening, like how long have they been trying to get somebody to?
Um, the opening has, it has been vacant to my knowledge since two thousand twenty. And it really wasn't an issue because so many things were closed during COVID. But now that things are opening back up, it, you know, it has provided a little bit of a hardship not having that working here to help coordinate. I do have to give, I do have to give a plug to Porter Ridge High School. Their PE teacher, Shannon, I think her last name's Kirman. She has been heavily involved in trying to get Spring Games up and going and collaborating with the state. So she has been a real helpful collaborator from the school end in bringing this partnership and trying to revive it for next school year.
That's awesome. She was my daughter's middle school PE teacher.
Okay, she's phenomenal.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, first of all, you guys are doing a phenomenal job working with special needs as a passion and a love that you must have. So I commend you guys for all the work that you all have, have done and continue to do. So my question, Sarah, she asked one of them, so she beat me to the punch on the one about the advisory council. But I have a question about the supporting of the parents. So when a child has been identified to be a part of this program, how is, how does the support look for a parent throughout their school year, throughout their educational years? Because it can become very overwhelming for a parent when they don't understand like the acronyms and, and all of the, the different words and what have you. And just trying to support their child and be their child's number one advocate. So how does that support look from the advisory council? Are there workshops monthly or weekly? How does, how does that look?
So there's a couple of different things that we provide. So one is having a point of contact at the school level. So who is that point of contact a parent can go to? It's typically, first and foremost, there's an EC case manager, which is an EC teacher that is assigned specifically to that student. That would be the first point of contact. As far as administration, every school designate an assistant principal is what's called a special needs administrator. They receive training from the EC department on processes and best practices. So that would be your point of contact from an administrative standpoint. From the EC department, we have EC program specialist. A program specialist typically has about five or six schools that they work with to support programming, assist parents, they can, you know, talk with them. A parent can call them and talk through concerns they have regarding IEPs or programming, or just ask general questions. And then we also have our EC social workers that will help link them into the community. Typically, that comes through the assistant principals, the special needs administrators. Let us know when a parent needs that support. And then Linda can talk a little bit about our Transition Fair where we try to link during our parent sessions. We try to link parents with community agencies that will provide supports, whether it's advocacy or respite care or any type of situations like that. Every family's needs is different. So Linda, do you want to talk just a few minutes about the Transition Fair?
Yes, our Transition Fair, which has been going on now for, I think this is our sixteenth. Last year we did have a Transition Fair. It was virtual for sessions for our students and also for parents. During the parent sessions, they, we had the different community agencies available that gave presentations and also answered questions for parents. We're doing the same, we're having the EC Parent Awareness Night again this year, April the twenty-eighth. It will be in person and it will be held at the Union County Agricultural Center. And it's from five PM to eight PM. Parents will have the opportunity to attend two forty-minute sessions with just some, some of the major community agencies. And then we'll also have vendors that will also be there. And that consists of also community agencies that provide services for individuals with disabilities throughout Union County and for all age groups. So that information is being sent out to parents now.
And what day is that again?
That is April the twenty-eighth, Thursday from five to eight PM. During that week, starting on the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, through the twenty-eighth, actually, we will have sessions for our students and they will be virtual. One of the highlights that, you know, if you guys would like the link to it, is our Wednesday in which our OCS students will, as a team in each of the schools, do a digital presentation on employability skills. And then our TTA will do also an employment showcase as far as like their vocational skills, what they've learned. Those sessions will be happening on that Wednesday. On that Monday, you may want to join that one too, because on that Monday, we always bring back former students. And those students talk about their journey from high school to where they are now. And I will tell you that last year was like, wow, out of this world. We had like two students that came on and one of them was working for a company that does like molding and restoration. And he was responsible for a team of individuals. So it's, it's just been, it was just awesome. So this year we're planning to have a panel. So we'll probably have probably three to five students to come and share their journey.
Now, that's going to be, those panels will be virtual?
Yes, all of, all of the student sessions will be virtual.
All right.
And I can share, I can share those links with Dr. Breedlove so he can pass them on to you guys if you're interested and time allows for you to get on and pop in.
And I would also like to request that you record those and make those available on demand, either through the UCS website or your area so that those that can't attend live can still access that afterwards, as well as any presentations you feel might be helpful on the twenty-eighth, even if they're in person. Can those be recorded for on-demand replay by parents that, you know, are unable to make it or just want to refresh? Do you have that capability? Can you get somebody out there with a camera and record it?
We would have to check on that, yeah. We would have to check on that and what's available at the Ag Center to do that, based on how we have those sessions set up because of the way the spacing is.
You might want to reach out to Tyra. I bet she'd be your, your person who could help you with figuring out the audio visual into that. I'm just thinking that that, that information, that resource would be invaluable for someone to refer back to, especially if they can't make it live.
Yes, that is something we'll look into, absolutely.
Did you have some other questions?
Yes.
I did, yes, sir. I know you mentioned about the IEP and the five oh four. They're similar, but they're very different, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I think that's important that parents understand and know, and, and sometimes it just, I believe they know it, but just through the hustle and bustle of life, they forget and what have you. Is that something that's, they have a packet of information to let them know specifically? And I'm pretty certain that they do specifically what the IEP entails, what services they're able to receive versus the services that a five oh four are able to provide for them. Do, do they have that, that information as well?
As far as information and writing, I'd have to look into that. But the points of contact at the school level, typically for your five oh fours, there is a five oh four coordinator. Sometimes it's the guidance counselor, sometimes it's an assistant principal. And also the special needs administrator can talk to them both about both of those opportunities for students. And it really boils down to, does that student need the specialized instruction to act as that curriculum through North Carolina eligibility?
Okay, and the, there was one more question that I had. So the TTA program, they receive the certificate and the OCS program, they receive a diploma. I see the programs that, well, the companies that we're currently working with as far as a lot of our students transitioning to the workforce, do we work alongside with UDI?
So I can answer that. So as far as like UDI, it is considered a sheltered workshop. And I will tell you this, that yes, you know, there are times that there are students that definitely that type of vocational training is needed. However, with the state and also with the government recently, within the last, I would say, three years, is that the goal is to get students in an inclusive environment and to be integrated into the community. So it's not something that we promote for our students. However, we do make referrals to those community agencies that can help those students to do that.
Okay, okay, got you. Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay. Well, again, that's all the questions I have. Continue to do the work that you guys are doing. A lot of this information out, and I hope the parents that are listening really understand that we have a strong. Um, a lot of this information out, and I hope the parents that are listening really understand that we have a strong, um, a s- a strong program here and all we need to do is take advantage of it. I mean, um, my time working with special needs as a TA, that was one of the best experiences that I had. I mean, from East June to Wingate, even in Charlotte Mick. So, um, I won't, I, parents need to know that having a child that is special needs, it's not a curse, it is a blessing. And it is so fulfilling to have that child and you need to do all you can to support that kid. So you guys keep up the good work and, um, I'm excited to hear about the great things that you're doing. And I hope to be there on the 28th with you all in, in April. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Merrill, do you have some questions? Ms. Merrill?
My, my questions have already been covered. Thank you very much.
All right.
And thank you to our staff for doing a phenomenal job.
Uh, I want to second that, uh, or third that or fourth that. I will, uh, give my, uh, disclosure first. I am a founding member of the Special Needs Advisory Council. And that was a very, it was really my first tip of my toe into UCPS in, in many ways. Um, and this is back in, oh my gosh, 2008 or so, I think, when it was established. Oh, after our first child came to us. And I'm also a veteran of the IEP and 504, um, program. So, um, Dr. Beecham, how many meetings have you had of the, I call it snack, or we came up with snack, but the special ne- needs advisory council, how many meetings have you had over the past year or so?
So we had, last year we held there, there, every other month, um, last year. Now this year, um, we have not, April will be our first meeting. So we have not met regularly this year, but, um, looking at April to discuss, who will step in to do that chairperson role? That person's responsible for gathering the agenda items, meeting with families, understanding what the concerns are, um, and creating that agenda. And then I work collaboratively to bring the resources to the table to address any concerns. Um, so I'll be creating the agenda for April since there's not a designated chairperson at this point. So my goal is to get back on the every other month rotation for the first Tuesday of the month.
Well, I still have a student at UCPS, so I'm still a parent. So I will be, go ahead to volunteer if you can't find anybody, but, uh, I would also like to recommend to, uh, Ms. Merrill, the chair, if we want to, uh, consider an official or unofficial liaison from the board to the Special Needs Advisory Council, I'll be go ahead to volunteer my, my service. I'm, I'm glad to see you'll be, um, meeting and, and, um, starting on a consistent basis again, because I know from my experience, a lot of good ideas came out from the parents' perspective. Uh, and you said that April meeting will be virtual. You don't anticipate in-person meetings?
Well, since COVID-19, we switched to virtual and what we learned is that the parents really liked the virtual. Um, you know, when parents leave and their kids come home from school, sometimes it's difficult to come out to a 6:00 PM meeting or face-to-face meeting. So, you know, we had many that sat at the ball field in the car and participated. Um, so they really liked the accommodation of the virtual. So unless the committee chooses to go back face-to-face, I'm okay with the virtual.
Uh, could I ask whoever's responsible for that, could you send me a link to the meeting?
I can do that.
And I promise I'll mute myself most of this.
That is not, I will send it.
Um, going to, uh, IEP meetings, are those, uh, in-person with an option for virtual, or are they all virtual, or given the option for in-person IEP meetings these days?
So last year we did mostly virtual, um, just because of the nature of schooling. This year I would say it's kind of a hybrid. Um, we have some that are still choosing the virtual means of meeting. Um, it's less time off work for parents. It's easier to get to. We have had an increase in parent participation, um, is what I'm hearing from schools due to the virtual, because it is easier to schedule. Parents can attend on their lunch breaks or, um, just as they get off work. So it has been easily accommodated. However, those face-to-face meetings are still available.
Okay, all right. Um, I would also like to, oh, your TTA curriculum. Uh, I wonder as part of the curriculum, what the, uh, includes for modern technology? Uh, everything from operating a cell phone to doing a search, an email on a computer and, gosh, using a remote on the TV these days requires special training. And I just wondered if there's a technology component to particularly the, the TTA. I'm sure OCS students have, uh, exposure to that, but particularly TTA students that do feel are able, is there, uh, if there isn't a technology component, I would encourage that and perhaps you could get with Mr. Parker or someone from his department and help design a, um, technology curriculum component that would be in, in line with the students' capabilities in that area.
And Ms. Dry, and, you know, if anything COVID-19 closure taught us, it was to think outside of the box. So I met with Ms. Dry early on last school year because we really needed to look at how, for the students that chose the virtual school, how we were going to prepare them for community work and, um, while they were attending school virtually. So I'll let her speak a little bit about, um, some things that we did regarding that.
So surprisingly, a lot of our students, um, fare better with technology than some of us. So we're, um, we're always learning as well, um, things that we're trying to teach them and they'll know a shortcut or, you know, an app for that or something. So, um, the learning definitely goes both ways. I, I can say that our TTA program, um, does have technology all, all through, through, um, out the, the curriculum. Um, of course, all students have their Chromebooks. Um, a lot of the classrooms, uh, do, uh, use, uh, websites and different things, uh, for their, uh, instruction and to supplement instruction. Um, during the COVID shutdown last year, when we could not access the community, we did an online vocational program. Um, and, uh, our job coaches, we have a team of job coaches that would typically work out in the community, um, and do currently with the students. Uh, and so they worked alongside the students in the classroom, continuing to build those vocational skill sets, um, in terms of communication, uh, teamwork, time management. A lot of those things that we see our students, um, benefit from learning prior to entering the community. Um, there's so much more to learn vocationally than the actual hard task, um, that they're doing at work. A lot of those social vocational behaviors, uh, is really, uh, what our students, we find, um, need support in. So, uh, they continued to get vocational training last year, uh, even during the shutdown. Um, of course, this year we're excited to be back out in the community, um, but we're still incorporating a lot of, of technology. Uh, we try to teach our students, um, natural supports if possible. So for instance, um, you know, when we're talking about time management or time on task, um, if they have a cell phone or an iPad or, um, even their Chromebooks in their classroom, but especially when we're out in the community, uh, and we're trying to teach a little bit more, um, independence as well, then we use, um, our devices for things like timers, um, or notes or reminders or things like that. And so we work with the students to teach them to set it for themselves. Um, you know, when it comes to elapsed time, or I'm going to spend this much time on a task and then I'm going to move to another task, all with an effort to get them more independent, um, where technology is used. Uh, we also have, um, take advantage of a lot of, um, supplemental, uh, curriculums online. So, uh, the Department of Labor, um, has a program that, um, we share with our students called, uh, Skills to Pay the Bills. Um, and it is a series of, I believe, I pulled it up here just a second ago, just to make sure I didn't misspeak. It has six components, uh, that again, support a lot of the things that we try to, um, teach our students, um, in preparation for employment, um, in terms of, uh, the importance of networking, um, working as a team, working independently, uh, communication, um, all, all sorts of different things that, that we know. We've had parents a lot of times say, gosh, I wish, I wish my other students would get this, uh, type of training. You know, everybody could use a little, um, sometimes a little boost, uh, in terms of professionalism, um, and vocational skills. So, um, we definitely, uh, were put to the test last year when we could not access the community, uh, and really tried to immerse, um, a lot of technology aspects into our TTA programming. So always up for more. So if there's, um, programming or apps or different things that, uh, you guys know of or parents, you know, are willing to share with us, uh, then we're certainly look to, uh, to get those implemented with our students.
Do you know the approximate enrollment of UCPS students at, in the TTA or OCS and/or OCS program? How many kids do we have in each?
I would, I'd refer to Dr. Beecham for a total number.
Got a, got a guess?
We had overall EC students, we have about 3,900, um, EC students, students with IEPs within our district. So it's about 10 and a half percent, um, of our total population. As far as those that are in OCS and TTA, I don't have those numbers right in front of me.
Okay, that's fun.
Oh, and I can also add a lot of our students, oh, I'm sorry, Linda. I can also add a lot of our.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead, Amber.
I was going to say, in both programs, um, the students take advantage of the Google Suite as well, um, in their daily curriculum. A lot of the, um, curriculum components that they do, um, are Google Sheets, um, Google Slides. They've learned a lot of that as well, um, since COVID. So, um, that will be what a lot of the platforms that they're using for our transition fair presentations, actually.
Is your, uh, guidelines for your curriculum like, uh, the traditional curriculum courses that we're seeing? The Board of Education on an annual basis reviews that different curriculum, makes changes. Is that what you see in your universe as well, on and on? You know, every, every year there's some new tweak of standards or new, something added that causes you to, to change your curriculum? Do you see that in OCS and TTA as well?
Well, I know within TTA, I think the last update was in 2017. Um, I haven't looked back to verify that. So, um, they did a pretty strong update in 2017. So there hasn't been a whole lot of major changes since then. Um, but when, with the OCS, we typically follow, you know, the, the future-ready curriculum. So, uh, our standards course of study, um, and we update as they update those.
Okay, all right. Do you know if the hospital's going to extend their search program to our new, uh, hospital up here in Stallings?
I would love that.
That would be a yes. They have already said to our steering committee that they would, uh, like to have a program, uh, and what we've talked about is designing our own project search, uh, catered to our district, uh, to meet more of the needs of a blend of OCS and TTA students. So we're really excited about that.
Whoa, 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 run that by me again.
Um, we're talking about doing a program that would be a blend of, uh, OCS and TTA students. Um, and here's why.
Search version two, 2.0?
Yep, and it'll be designed for Union County specifically. Um, the program that we currently have, uh, I will tell you that due to COVID, and I was just on a state call in reference to Project Search, uh, and statewide, uh, everyone's, uh, dealing with recruitment at this time. Uh, we are in the stages of recruitment for, um, our local Project Search here. And I can tell you that right now we probably have three applications, uh, and normally we get at least nine to 10. Um, so definitely statewide, uh, they've seen, um, you know, some, some challenges with recruitment for the upcoming year.
So you're talking about instead of, or in addition to the state search program, developing our own?
Yes.
To deal, or, or to accommodate both classifications? Okay, now, a couple things. Where is that in the process? How do we move it along? And how does the Board of Education support that effort? Because here's my deal. And that's why I'm such a big supporter, or when I've tripped across the coffee nut, it, it really, uh, struck me is because the more real-world job experience and education we can get these kids in, in areas of work that are dying for loyal and competent employees, the better we serve our community and the better we serve our students and the better we serve our parents. So you're talking about another angle right now of a new program in working with Atrium that would e- expand the scope of, of potential participation in the healthcare field. So how far along is this? And what can the Board of Education do to support that effort?
I would say this is in the very infancy stages, uh, would probably be the best way to describe it. Um, you know, and Linda works very closely with Atrium Health, um, and all of this, so she can speak more to it. But as we get more information and some timelines, I'll be meeting with Dr. Breedlove to kind of go over what would be the requirement of the district, what we would need to support this, how it would look on the ECN, um, what it looks like on the Atrium, and, and that way he could present it to the Board of Ed, yes.
So you told me enough. Linda's the one I bugged to find out where y'all are, right?
Pretty much. Although, you know, I will, as developments become available, I'll make sure Dr. Breedlove is in, you know, up to date with that information and so he can be our point of contact.
Now, I assume you're keeping people from the, uh, Healthcare Academy at Monroe High and Monroe Middle, well, not really the middle school, the high school. I'm sure you're keeping them in the loop as well, right? The Healthcare Academy, I mean, as far as, I, I know they're not hit, they're not involving TTA or OCS students, but they're still interacting with the hospital. So I would encourage you to at least know who those part, folks are and have a conversation, right?
Right.
Okay, I want to go back to the.
So before you move forward, I just want to interject. Here are some things that we've done so that you know that we are, we have been connecting with the academy as well. However, that was on a, uh, kind of like on a different level, uh, because we had tried to do a collaborative partnership to get, uh, pre-employment services, uh, starting, um, at our middle school level. So we have, uh, we have met, uh, EC, uh, CTE and the Health Academy in looking at something for a middle school level. Um, that's just something that we've been exploring, uh, and hoping that that can happen. Uh, as far as like the project search, as Dr. Beecham said, it's in the infant stages. They just mentioned it to us a couple of meetings ago, that yes, they'd like to do something. Uh, and so we have to come together and kind of come up with a draft idea for that. Um, one other thing that I do want to mention, I'm gonna get it all in while I got the opportunity. Uh, so the other thing that you mentioned was the fact that we need to have the students to have, um, life, um, experiences. So one of the things that, if you all remember, we kicked off before COVID, Everybody Works Union, which was a collaborative partnership with Union County Chamber, uh, Vocational Rehabilitation, um, and our EC department. Uh, so at this point, um, I am now a member of the Chamber's Diversity and Inclusion Committee. So coming in June, uh, we will be presenting Everybody Works Union. Uh, we'll present some of the students that are working, uh, and the employers to talk about, um, that process, because that is the important piece that we have to look at, so that employers know that number one, our students are being trained. Uh, number two, that there are resources for them, um, you know, upon them employing students with disabilities. So those are some things that our department is working on with the community.
Let me jump on top of it, Linda. I think that is a great effort, which brings me back to, and what I, when I say the Coffee Nut Cafe, I'm not talking about as much the one location that we have in Monroe there. I'm talking about the concept, hopefully eventually in each one of our high schools where we have. Hopefully eventually in each one of our high schools where we have OCS and enough, eh, enough OCS and TTA students, and I don't know how they're dispersed. But an actual real-life retail-type setting like they have at Porter Ridge. I'd like to take the Porter Ridge model and have it in each one of our high schools if we have sufficient student population to support it at that high school versus the actual off-site. I, I don't know what your thoughts are, but I think, you know, the Coffee Nut Cafe was great, but you've got, you gotta get the, the public to know where the place is. They gotta find it. And you gotta, you gotta transport students. So it's just me thinking that I would rather have the Porter Ridge model right there in the school versus an off-site location unless you have to bring more than one school into it. I don't know. What do you think, Linda? You've seen of both. What do you think about that?
Well, I, I like in the school. However, we have to keep in mind, we're, we're preparing our students to be out and integrated into the community and more so now. Um, so to me, yes, within the school, that's a starting point. But the ultimate goal is they're gonna have to deal with different personalities, different people, people they don't know, people they're not familiar with. Uh, so if we're gonna really truly get them ready for adulthood and in the community, then we definitely need that community exposure to have them in the community. Um, and I understand what you're saying about the coffee nut, but, um, and the coffee nut did well once we did the marketing and once we got started, but then COVID hit. So what I've said is even for the coffee nut, right now it's like starting all over. Because we gotta redo all of that. Uh, and I will tell you that just on yesterday, um, I received an email from one of the police officers, uh, asking me about the coffee nut. And he wanted to know, you know, that we were gonna still do it. And he also wanted to know, is there some support that we can give for the coffee nut? So I thought that was great. I was excited to hear that.
So what, for the coffee nut, refresh my memory, how long do the students need to train before, before they're ready to actually go and open up the store? Wasn't there some type of, uh, uh, in-class preparations that, that took a while before they're at, physically ready to go in this, have the store open?
Well, there are two things that we did. Uh, one thing that we did was we collaborated with, uh, North Carolina Extension and they did, they took those students to a session of, uh, safe plates, which is similar to like, uh, yeah, Safe Serve. They did that. And then, um, just to get them acclimated and oriented with the environment of the coffee nut itself, they actually, we did a training with them, probably about two weeks of training, uh, that we did with them and also had some people to come in and present. So that preparation will be incorporated into the opening draft so that we know when we're gonna open.
Is after the return from Labor Day in fall of this year, a reasonable expectation for the reopening of the coffee nut?
Oh, certainly.
Okay, that's the beginning of school?
Uh, well, we'll do, uh, normally, most of our students don't go, start going out into the community within probably about two to three weeks. Amber, I think you'll agree with that, probably two to three weeks. Uh, so within that time, we'll have that, uh, training incorporated and then hopefully have, um, a slotted out date to open.
All right, great.
And there's benefits having both, you know, and having them within the school helps to bring in some of the community component. It, you know, provides a reason for parents to come into the school and, um, get a service and, and just stay connected that way, but also in the community allows for that community partnership and the experience side of the school.
Well, I will leave it to your expertise to decide what is best for whatever school. I'm sure there are some physical limitations at some of our schools as well. But, uh, I would just encourage the program to be, you know, candle store is great. My, don't tell my wife about it. I'll sure buy up the stock there. Uh, at, at Cutherson, but I, I would encourage it at, at all of our high school. Well, we're almost there. I don't know if there's a significant population at, uh, Marvin Ridge or Weddington to be able to support its own standalone retail-type, uh, setting. Would I guess have to look at the numbers, but I hope this is in some shape or form will be expanded to our locations. That's basically all the questions I had. I want to thank you folks for the presentation. Again, I will look forward to, uh, particip- not participating, but being present for your Special Needs Advisory Council meeting. If there's anything else the Board can do, please let me know. And John, did you have an additional question?
I did. I think, Ms. Merrill, did you have one? I saw you on mute first.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank, um, thank both of you for being with us today and helping our students transition to adulthood. And I just pray that they do not graduate before they're able to, um, get back in and complete these, these necessary, uh, life skills. But thank you very, very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Um, quick question. What type of support do we have for, um, the faculty and staff that serve, that serve this population?
It's a great question. So we meet, um, bi-monthly with our special needs administrators to provide training on best practices and processes. We have, uh, virtual help sessions for our teachers on a routine basis where they can, we have a, a program specialist that they rotate every two hours. So we open the window from eight to four on a day and they can pop in and out and ask questions, um, whether it's student-specific or paperwork specific, whatever it may be. Um, we do provide trainings related to curriculum and best practices that they are attending. Most of our trainings have been virtual at this point. Um, I'm hoping next year to start incorporating some face-to-face trainings. So we do have a, a wide variety. We have literacy and math trainings, um, to support the curriculum through our, um, literacy coordinator and math coordinator. And we also provide training on assessments and, and the progress monitoring.
Got you. Okay, all right. And last question, I'm sorry, all of our class, and I'm specifically talking about District One. Are all of our classrooms, do they have a teacher um, in all of our District One classrooms for, for, for our special needs students?
I will say.
Hard to, let me, let me say this, ask this question. And I know that dealing with this population, it, again, it has to be, it has to be a passion to do it, you know, any, everyone cannot just serve, serve this population of students. So I guess my first question, my first question is, all of the classrooms in District One, are they filled with the teacher? And number two, um, has it been a challenge to fill those classrooms?
So I will say as a whole, we have had, um, a challenge this year filling positions. We do currently have some vacancies. Um, we have been able to fill those with some very qualified subs. In some cases, we've had, um, some situations in which we've had te- uh, teacher assistants that are very close to licensure that we've been able to work through some state licensure to get them to take these positions. Uh, we've reached out to contract companies about contracting teachers, um, if, you know, since we can't find any, um, locally. So we've been trying to work creatively to fill those positions, um, but we do still have some vacancies. And I didn't let this meeting end without just giving credit to the teachers. Our EC teachers are, they have a lot on their plate, of course, every teacher does, but, um, the hours that they spend, you know, the IEP is individualized. So when they have a, a class of eight to ten students, you're looking at individualization for eight to ten students. So they spend a lot of hours planning and preparing, um, you know, days and activities and strategies for those students. And, uh, I just can't thank them enough for everything that they do. You know, many have been participating in the letters training and other curriculum-based trainings on top of just the daily duties of their teaching abilities, so responsibilities. So I just want to just say thank you to them.
Good job. Yes, ma'am. Great. Any other questions? Any other questions? If not, we'll let these ladies get back to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us today.
Presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much.
Right. Item D, items to be taken to the full board. Uh, we have none. Our next meeting date looks like that would be Wednesday, April twentieth. I'm going to assume at this point we will be in person because I think we have some, um, curriculum, future curriculum to review. So for the time being, we will call this an in-person meeting on the twentieth. If there's no other business to come before the meeting, uh, except the motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much for your attendance and, uh, we're down.